I would like to call the monthly meeting to Saint Bernard Parish School Board to order. We'd like to have you rise for the prayer.
Dear Heavenly Father, we call upon you this evening, asking for your guidance in our decision-making. Give us the wisdom to make our judgments based on the best interests of this community and the children we serve. These things we ask in your name.
Amen.
Jesus change.
Ms. Isart, would you lead us in a pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Row column, Ms. Hoce.?
Mr. Campbell?
Here.
Mr. Egan?
Here.
Ms. Jackson?
Here.
Ms. Lee Bowman?
Here.
Ms. Lemoine?
Here.
Ms. Isart?
Here.
Ms. Strangland?
Here.
Mr. Long?
Here.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Warner?
Here.
And Ms. White?
Here.
Thank you, Ms. Hoce. We go to number two, the communication. Supernews. Ms. Pritchett. Ms. Lexi Pritchett. Glad to have you here this afternoon.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
So, in this month's communication report, we have all of the press releases that have gone out since our last meeting, including a spotlight on our new principals at Trist Middle School and Andrew Jackson Middle School. We also feature something that we are very excited about, which is Cheltenham High School has a national merit semifinalist that was recently announced. Congratulations to Kobe Barrow. And we tomorrow are having an update to our press release that went out on August 24th titled Lions, Eagles, and Eyes, Oh My. We're very excited to let you know that the glasses that our students were fitted for and prescribed are coming in. And so tomorrow at 9:00 a.m., if any of our board members would like to join us, we'll be at Saint Bernard Middle. We did put out a media advisory, having the media come if they'd like to. We're very excited about this opportunity for our students. We are the first school in the state of Louisiana to have this opportunity for our students, and we're hoping this will just grow. So, we're very excited to see that tomorrow. And then if you continue in your packet, we had Ring Day for the class of 2023. Last week, it was absolutely beautiful. And then continuing on, we have our social media analytics, Twitter analytics, LinkedIn analytics, and our district website analytics. I did want to point out to all of you that knew this month, we livestreamed Ring Day this year. We did it last year as well. Last year, we had a total of, I think, 117 people watching live. This year, on that day, we had over 1,000 people watching. And so, yes, so those that couldn't be with us, they absolutely joined us through the livestream and were able to be a part of their families and friends' special day. Other than that, we have a very special edition of Supernews to show you. So, Jack and Barry, when you're ready?
There were Eagles getting glasses, Owls getting rings, and our school board getting kudos. Those stories and more on this month's edition of Supernews.
Hi, I'm Lexi Pritchett.
And I'm Barry Lemoine. And welcome to Supernews, where we take a look at all the good things happening in our school system.
We'll begin with a look at a vision clinic, when members of the Lions Club International Foundation recently visited Saint Bernard Middle School in hopes of helping some of the Eagles there see more clearly.
St. Bernard Middle School was the first school in Louisiana to receive services from Site for Kids Vision Clinic, a mobile vision center which was on campus, allowing a number of students to meet with a doctor, get an eye exam, receive a prescription, and be fitted for a brand-new pair of glasses.
We work with the Saint Bernard School Board because also they have a Lions Club. So, being the first one, we really wanted to reach out and had that great combination. But our goal is to bring vision care to those in need that cannot actually reach that care.
The Louisiana Lions Eye Foundation is proud to bring this first-of-its-kind, school-based eye health program to Saint Bernard Parish, bringing vision care to those in need. Eye professionals performed a visual acuity test and screened for common eye conditions on-site. Selected students will receive two pairs in a couple of weeks, one for school and a spare pair for home.
The outreach is part of an ongoing partnership with its corporate sponsor, Johnson &amp; Johnson Vision, who understand that good vision fosters good learning. Not only can these students see better, they look great, too. I tell you, Lexi, I really appreciate people who purchase eyeglasses.
Why?
Because they pay good money to see me.
Okay, well, now we'll go from glasses to a contact sport, football. Here, we see some of the highlights of the CHS Annual Jamboree, the traditional kickoff to the football season. Good luck to all of our coaches and players as the Owls prepare for a tough district schedule.
In other sporting news, the Cheltenham High School Alumni Association recently hosted the Paul Granbury Memorial Golf Tournament as a fundraiser and a tribute to Mr. Granbury. Dozens of teams took part in the event, and it's truly a good time for a good cause. And one of Paul's longtime sidekicks and a fellow educator, Louis Bowden, was also honored at the tournament with the putting competition bearing his name. They may be gone, but will never be forgotten.
We'd also like to thank Paul Gressel and all of the officers of the Saint Bernard Retired Teachers Association, who visited a recent school board meeting for a special presentation honoring the effort and commitment of the parish's public schools.
We recognize you, it's from the Saint Bernard Retired Teachers, we recognize you and honor the ongoing commitment of the Saint Bernard Parish School Board and the dedicated teachers and support personnel in providing quality education, instruction, so that students in this community are responsible, productive citizens, and lifelong learners.
After his brief remarks, Gressel and his fellow officers presented the board with a token of its appreciation, a beautiful acrylic trophy commemorating the moment, a tribute to the efforts of teachers, administrators, and support personnel who all do what is best for children each day. With the theme of gratitude this year, we were happy to see some of our dear friends back with us.
And now, let's meet a pair of educators who also do what's best for children each day, our two new middle school principals, Cara Colburn and Todd Larch.
My name is Todd Larch, and I'm the principal of Andrew Jackson Middle School and Saint Bernard Parish. This is my first year as principal. Previous to that, I was assistant principal for three years, and prior to that, a teacher at Andrew Jackson. It is my honor and privilege to work in the best district in the city.
This is my 27th year in education. I started at Sebastian Roy down in Florissant, then moved to Saint Bernard High School, also worked at S Bus and Cheltenham High, as well as Tioga in central Louisiana during Hurricane Katrina. I came to Trist back in 2008 and have been here ever since.
I like to build on already-established culture, one that involves not only our school employees, but the community around us, the stakeholders around us. With oversight from our school district and our leadership team at the school district level, we welcome parents to come in and give us their support and ideas on how we can make the school better.
Glue stands for growing, leads to uniting everyone. And we felt that that was a good way to bring back that cohesiveness to our faculty. We had both young and experienced teachers. We had some new teachers, so we wanted to pull it all together and be the glue that holds our faculty together and holds our school together, especially for the benefit of our children.
We need more parental input. We send out surveys at the end of every school year or during every school year where we ask in parent input so that we can know how to be a better school district, so that we can know how to be a better school. So, filling out those surveys are key. We also need more parent volunteers. Through our PTO, we are always seeking our parents to help out at games, help out during dances, help out period with their great ideas and suggestions.
This year, we are also implementing PAC, which is Parents, Administrators, the Community, our teachers, and we're even including our students. And so, we will have our first meeting in October, somewhat on the lines of a PTO. We are going to have some guest speakers. In October, we're going to start with our school improvement plan, as well as reviewing some of the things that our district has implemented with regard to the crisis plan. Each month, we'll focus on a different issue or a topic, and that way we can continue to improve and have more parental involvement.
I like to encourage our children to compete only with themselves. The only person I expect our students to be better than today or the person those students were yesterday. So, I don't want them to feel as though there's a competition between them and anyone else but themselves. So, all I want to see is steady growth, steady improvement, as we try to prepare them for adulthood.
People who come to this district from other districts to work, they realize how lucky they have it, and they let us know how supportive they feel. And that's only with the help of our facilitators, like Stephanie Sago, Erin Larson, when she was one of the facilitators, as well as now Rebecca Gio.
Thank you to these outstanding educators. We're grateful to have your commitment to all of our middle school students.
And now, we'll take a look at the reason we are on location today, here in the French Quarter, for a special Art Strong Master Class taking place at the Jazz Museum. Louisiana First Lady Donna Edwards and Annalise Casar Tedesco hosted the class with guest artists Ivan Griffin and Anna Briscoe, focused on various styles of vocal music, including musical theater, spiritual, and classical vocal literature.
Dear friend, I am so sorry about last night. Last night, I was so nasty. Well, he deserved it. But even so, that George is not like this George. This is a new George that I don't know.
The program was part of Teach Ma'am, Music, Art Movement, one of the initiatives led by Louisiana First Lady Donna Edwards, to encourage schools to incorporate music, art, and physical education courses in their daily curriculum, and to encourage respect for the arts. Our pro-stud students were also a part of this gathering, cooking, catering, and serving all the participants. Food, music, and hands-on learning were all part of the fun.
And speaking of fun learning opportunities, 5th graders from across the district have started a new in-school playwriting program. Professional teaching artists from a local theater company, Goat in the Road, will work with teachers and students to write and create original work.
Besides enhancing writing skills, the program also helps build students' creativity and confidence, as each student will get one play published. Students will also take part in seeing live theater, as professional actors will perform selected student work, taking it from the page to the stage. Thank you to the Miro Foundation for the funding and bringing this new and exciting offering to our elementary schools.
And now, we'll go from using imagination to a reimagine grant. This $1.3 million grant provides college credit opportunities to our students by offering a diverse dual enrollment portfolio that includes innovative apprenticeships and associate degrees, providing state-of-the-art educational programs that meet the needs of all students.
Our goal is that by 2025, 90% of high school graduates will earn a minimum of six years of college credit, and 10% of those graduates will complete apprenticeships or full associate programs.
The reimagine grant will help our students prepare for their future and will have a lasting impact on our district and our community. We're hopeful that just as these opportunities have long-lasting impacts, so too will showing and sharing our gratitude.
We'd also like to pay homage to all of our Cheltenham High School seniors who recently took part in Ring Day. Held on National Gratitude Day, the event truly was a day to give thanks to the parents for their ongoing support, to our teachers and administrators who helped shape these young adults in and out of the classroom, and of course, to our seniors. To them, we give our gratitude for their commitment and trust, and we wish them well going forward. Congratulations to the class of 2023 on your historic day.
Well, that's about all the time we have for today's show. But before we go, let's take a look at some cool things that were a part of the sound and lights of this year's tech show. Congrats to teachers Fred A. Bear, Brianna Acosta, and to all of the students who create the behind-the-scenes magic in giving others a chance to shine.
Nice job, Techies. And thanks to all of you for tuning in today. And we'll see you next time on Supernews, where we always let the Supernews roll.
Well, Lexi, that's fantastic. And I tell you what, we've got so many great, talented young people going to our school system, and it's a credit to all our teachers, our staff, and to this board, you know, Ms. Hoce and Ms. Hoce. And their cultural arts building, it brings out a lot of things that a lot of students would not have the opportunity if we didn't have it, you know? So, but great job. Any other board members? Ms. Isart?
Just to say that also, in addition, at Cheltenham High School's football game, the band, all the performance, the tournaments, they looked great. And I was able also to go to the Trist Andrew Jackson game this past week. And we have wonderful students and teachers, and all their performing groups and the football teams did a great job. So, we have many opportunities here in Saint Bernard Parish that a lot of our students are participating in, in addition to the academics. So, thank you. Congratulations also to the seniors of 2023. Ring Day was beautiful.
Right.
And I think kudos to Todd Larch and Cara Colburn, because that game on Thursday was absolutely amazing, the amount of people that were there. It was so amazing to see, especially coming out of, you know, some years where we were restricted. And I think as their first year as principals, they did a great job in getting everyone in there and doing that. So.
Right. But to add on to that, as Ms. Isart was just saying, is that we've got dual enrollment, with Catherine Lemoine's over there. And it's fantastic that the students can go to NUNAS and get college credits, because today, you need more than high school, you know, to get in the working world today. So, kudos to NUNAS, because they're doing a fantastic job. If someone would get into culinary, they want to do space, you know, be a rocket scientist, whatever, it's their forum. So, I thank you. And great job. Anybody else? Okay, thank you, Ms. Pritchett. Okay. I noticed, Andrew brought me some slips that some people would like to speak tonight. In order to be on the agenda at a monthly meeting, we have to have a vote by the board to suspend the rules, okay? And it has to be a unanimous vote. So, and then the person who, if there is voted on, the speaker has three minutes to make the comments. The board will not take any action. The board will take it as a consideration. We'll discuss it at a later date. Okay?
Mr. Strangland, I will move that we open the floor for those who wish to speak at this time.
Okay, I have a motion by Ms. Isart, second by Mr. Long. Please cast your vote. Okay, is all in favor? It passes, so the floor is open right now. So, the first person I understand on the slip, Andrew, did you have any others?
No, I'm here.
Okay, thank you. Denise Maro?
That's me.
That you? No? Okay, all right. Well, thank you, though, anyway. Okay. Ms. Rodney?
Ms. Rodney?
Ms. Rodney, okay.
Good evening.
Good evening.
For the record, my name is Kisa. Kisa M. Rodney. I reside at 3201 Angelique Drive in Violet, Louisiana. That's all you need for the record as far as my demographic.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. I want to come to address you guys about some issues of security that has been going on at Cheltenham High. I come to you as a parent. I am a mother of a person, a student who's about to be a part of the class of 2023. And I am very, very, very concerned and alarmed about some of the things my daughter have came back and told me, as well as I've seen in social media, and things that have been addressed in the media. Number one was the issue with the former student with the gun coming on campus. I want to pose a question that you guys will consider at a later date. What will be done to amp the security up? Because he didn't get in the building, but he got on the grounds. And I see that as a severe problem. Anybody could have been hurt, shot, wounded, whatever. Another issue is what will be done to up the security in the building because of, from viewing media outlets, I did see there was a teacher who was moderately to severely harmed due to intervening in a fight between two male students. Now, I don't, I'm not a teacher, and I don't know the proper protocol, but I do know she stepped in and stopped the fight, and she got hurt. And that's very unfortunate. However, what is going to be done by this school board to implement a policy where there are more resource officers in this school? Because Cheltenham High is heavily, heavy populated school. What is going to be done about the outside, where resource officers are available outside of school times? Because there are a lot of extracurricular activities that go on at Cheltenham, various sports. I know at the time that this incident happened in the parking lot, I was in the parking lot picking up my child. Know nothing about the issue, because that's how populated the school is. But once again, if a bullet would have went out, it had no name. It could have hurt someone. So, I pose to this board, as soon as possible, so let's look at policy to amp the security in and out of Cheltenham High.
Thank you, Ms. Rodney. Okay, next person on here is Tracy Robinson. Just give us your name and your address, ma'am, please.
Good evening. My name is Tracy Robinson. I reside at 2400 Highland Drive in Violet, Louisiana. I come to speak almost what Ms. Rodney did. Now, I know Superintendent, you're proud of Cheltenham High School and what you've accomplished there. However, Cheltenham High School is overcrowded. It's bad over there. I know you all do the best you can, but that incident that happened, I don't know if that young man was still a student or what. But you all not only need to look at that, you need to look at the kids that it happened to. There are two young men in particular. These young men are afraid to go to school, and they're under doctor's care. You need to really look into that, because you know, you're concentrating on a teacher being hit. And I'm not saying that one is more important than the other, but it seemed like it was more emphasis put on the teacher being socked than this little boy bringing a gun. Do you realize that Saint Bernard could have been on the map for having a killing in a high school? I grew up down here. We've never had nothing like this. I graduated from Borrigard in '72. No one, I mean guns. And I know it's a different time and age, but we have to do something. And to say that you all are not going to get normal security for Cheltenham, shame on you. Shame on you. How many of you all have children or grandchildren in Cheltenham High School? I have a granddaughter, great nieces, and nephews, friends' children. I don't want to see them get hurt. And I don't know if you all just not paying attention to Cheltenham and looking at other schools, but y'all need to concentrate on Cheltenham a little more. There are lots of things going on inside Cheltenham High School that you all don't even know about. You don't know about it. Children talk. Children talk. They come home, they say things, they're in the streets saying things. You're going to get some serious information from children. So, I ask that you all look at Cheltenham High School carefully. And not only that, when something happens like that, be interested in the child that it's happened to, not just the child with the gun. Think about what emotional stress these young people have. No one has contacted the parents except to get a little information from the parents or from the child. No one has contacted them and said, "Well, how's your son doing? How's your daughter doing?" Be a little more concerned. Think about them as your children, and what would you do?
Thank you, Ms. Robinson. Next person, Ms. Green? How you pronounce your first name, right?
Quanisha Green.
Quanisha Green. Glad to have you here, ma'am. I'm sorry. I said, "We're glad to have you here."
Oh, thank you. I'm glad to be here.
Right, good.
My name is Quanisha Green. I reside at 2912 Ashley Drive in Violet. I am here, I am the parent of two of the students who were held at gunpoint in that parking lot of Cheltenham High School. I am the mother of three boys, one who graduated from Cheltenham High School, who now attends Russ College in Holly Springs, Mississippi, majoring in biology and plays basketball. I have a set of twins that are the captain and co-captain at Cheltenham High School basketball. They were actually at Cheltenham High School, leaving the gym from conditioning with one of their coaches when the incident took place. You read the articles that is wrong on the Saint Bernard page. It troubles me that you can print an article, and you can post the article on Facebook, and you can get all these evil comments about the kids need to go back to New Orleans, not knowing any facts or anything about the situation. And my children are and always have been residents of Saint Bernard Parish. My children also have received and hold merit awards, all three boys of Saint Bernard Parish, and all three boys hold proclamation awards as well. This has, this is really, really, has really, really troubled my children and my family. And I never in a million years thought that I would be standing here or enduring this pain of a parent to think what could have happened to my children if that gun would have went off. Resource officers, I can say, are doing a very good job. I know them on a first-name basis, Marco and Jamie. And that's because I am very involved in the school system. I have always been very involved in the school system, holding the president of the PTSO and doing a lot of volunteer work, as well as taking care of other areas around the schools. I do not appreciate the bare minimum when it comes to security. If not my children, someone else's children could have been, could have been hurt if not killed. It could have been a teacher. It could have been anybody. My children was bystanders. But if you read the article, the article states that two group of men, two groups of boys were engaged in an altercation. That never happened. That's not true. My children did not know the suspect. The suspect was in fact looking for a group of other kids as my children was walking out of, out of practice, going to get something to eat. The school is heavily populated. However, there's other schools that are heavily populated, but they have the resources. Cheltenham does not. Cheltenham needs more resource officers in the school, as well as out the school, as was stated. And I just, I just think that it, it, security is a major issue. It really doesn't matter who disagree, in my opinion, because every day, something is happening at that school. On just yesterday, I saw a video with a child being dragged in the hallways, and she never once fought back to her opponent. I know the timer is going off, but it's a very, very sensitive matter when it comes to my children.
Sure, I understand.
Um, another thing that I have, my children are under doctor's care. My children fear for their life. And they still go to school. I have a, one of my children who actually has nightmares and always wake up saying, thinking, thinking of for the cameras that was in the school, that was on the outside of the school. And I tried to take my child to speak with the resource officer, and the... And I, I tried to take my child to talk, to speak with the resource officer and the statement that was made in front of my child was if it would have happened twenty minutes prior to, it would have been a more serious situation. If it would have happened twenty minutes too, that's what you give a child that I have to take to the emergency room and is now under psychiatry and psychology treatment? Both of them, they're, they're twins as well. So I'm asking that y'all please put security in place and I pray that y'all handle the situation as a whole, as well as all of the situations.
True.
As what, and not just focus on, and, and I also have a problem with this input.
Your time's running out right now.
I understand. With the teacher, I feel like more info, more, I felt like as a whole, the school board felt like as if the fight with the stu, with the teacher was in fact more important than the gun because the gun was never heard of, but the fight was all over the news. I feel some type of way about that, as I should as a parent. So I just feel like a lot of things need to be changed. Um, and that comes, that comes with going into a lot of deep things. I know my time is up.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Green.
You're welcome.
Okay. Okay, well, next we have Samantha Gonzalez.
Hi, everyone. I also have a son that attends Shellman High.
Could you?
I also have a few concerns.
Can you give your address and your name?
Oh, my name is Samantha Gonzalez. I live at seventeen Rendezvous Drive.
Thank you, ma'am.
And like, first of all, like everybody else says, the security, we definitely need to work on that. I mean, we have kids at the high school getting pepper sprayed. Some of y'all didn't hear about that. We have children getting pepper sprayed. We have children have guns pulled out on them. We have children following other children after school to fight them. I mean, we have teachers getting hurt, like, when are y'all going to realize? I was asked, I was asked about the metal detectors. You know what I was told? That I have to go vote. Like, seriously? Let me tell, I go to the, I vote every time there is an election, you know? And I voted from, from several of y'all as well, you know? So I bring my concerns to, about my child to the school and I get talked down upon. Seriously, some of the administration, they really need classes on people skills. And I know several parents that feel the same way I do, that can't even talk to the assistant principal without feeling some type of way. So I tried to talk to him. That was just a joke. Asked to talk to Mr. Warner. He's not available. Went to the school board, asked for several people, Mr. Powell, Ms. Doris, everybody. There was no one there to speak to me, except for a separate secretary that I didn't know. I left several messages for several schoolwoman. I have not yet heard, hear back from anyone. You know? I mean, we as parents, we're bringing our concerns and y'all want us to work together, but how are we supposed to work together when we can't even talk to administration? We all pay taxes. That's, you know, I mean, that's what we're here for. We're here for the safety of our children. You know, I mean, how hard is it to put metal detectors in? You know, like this lady said, would have that child would have gotten a school? My kid, I like, I have nephews, nieces, you know? My children go to this school. I'm not just concerned about the safety of my kid or my family members, but every, everybody's shock and the safety of our staff. Y'all are going to tell me, oh, yeah, our, our, our staff's safe. They're safe, they're getting hit. How can you tell me that my child's safe and you can't even protect your teachers? I know there's a parent here right now, her daughter, and I know this, my little niece, she's the sweetest thing you ever can meet, minding her business, a fight breaks out, what happened? She ends up in a hospital. She's still going to the hospital, may have to have surgery. My cousin didn't even get a call from anyone at the school and that's another problem. Every time a gun's brought, a gun's brought to the school, teacher gets hit, we don't hear about this. We hear, we hear nothing about it until social media or the news or someone else brings it to our attention. We get calls all the time, huh? Send out to every parent why y'all don't send us when something bad happens. And I know, I'm not trying to underestimate Shellman High. I know we have a lot of good, you know, um, you know, y'all don't say, we have a lot of good things in place at Shellman High. Our football team's excellent. Our cheerleading team's excellent. We do have some ki, like, I mean, my daughter graduated with honors and is working, she done worked on a spaceship that's going into space right now from Shellman High. But the bullet, I mean, I don't know, the violence has got to stop and it seems like nobody's even worried about that. You know? We bring the, the situation to the violence for y'all and like, oh, well, we're going to talk about the situation with your child. We're just here to talk about the situation with your child. No, I care about every child. If anybody knows me, anybody here can say, I love everybody's children. And us, as the Saint Bernard, we are a close-knit community. So we care about everybody's children, not just mine. And then I do understand, we may have kids that come from New Orleans or whatever. It doesn't matter. It, our kids are the ones that's doing this too. It's not just them kids. If we, I understand if those are good kids and they want a quality education, they deserve it. But the, the school, at the end of the day, the school's overpopulated and understaffed. So open another high school for us, put more security in there. You know, I mean,
Okay.
And that's all I have to say. And honestly, some of y'all's staff really, really do need, should take classes on people skills, especially the assistant principal at Shellman High School.
Thank you, Ms. Gonzalez. Okay, next person's Anita Harris.
It's it or no?
Huh?
It's it or no?
Okay, said it all. So Harris. Did it? Okay, thank you, Ms. Harris. Okay, now we have Mr. Bo Bowman. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, sir. I know the board knows me. I'm Bo Bowman. I'm at nineteen Queens Court in Shellman, Louisiana. And I, I, I'm here to address this evening a lot of uh stuff that I'm reading in the media, uh, social media, other things along those lines that are just outright falsehoods. First of all, I, I, I hear the clapping for opening another high school. But what I don't, what I, what I don't think people grasp is, is what's going on economically with the board right now. I made my living for the better part of twenty years examining multimillion dollar corporations and finding more way to, to squeeze out money out of them. I managed almost two billion dollars in assets. I've looked at the board's budget. I've analyzed it top to bottom. First of all, what most people in the community don't understand is you've lost a million too because of the closing the pipeline, right?
That's correct.
Colonial pipeline is closed, so the school board is now down one point two million dollars in, in Mills taxes. And, and pretty, pretty, pretty close on that?
Yes.
Next thing I also noticed that is, is general liability insurance has also gone up tremendously as well. Do I, do I read that right? I, I'm looking, I'm looking at five point two here on the agenda and it's two hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. I'm looking at five point four on the agenda, which is a cyber liability for thirty-six thousand dollars, which I'm pretty sure you haven't had in the past, correct?
Correct.
Okay. I'm looking at cost per student increasing and your revenue decreasing. So the point I would make to anybody listening right now, this board's probably going to have to go out and ask for more millage to be able to afford the increase in what's going on here and the loss of the mon, of the income from the, from the colonial pipeline. The problem is people in Saint Bernard don't vote Mills very, very often, okay? And we're, you're already behind, you're already behind Jimmy Pullman and the Sheriff's Department who's asking for eleven Mills in December.
Twelve, yeah.
Okay? So they're asking for homeowners to go to another eleven Mills to help him support his deputies, to pay his deputies what Jefferson Parish and other parishes are capable of paying him so he continues to quit losing them. Well, I as a homeowner would agree to pay for that. I, I agree. I agree we should do that. I also agree that this school board should also look at additional Mills to be able to afford the security, the other issues that, that are being brought forward here tonight, but they've got to understand the position that the board's in right now and the community's in right now, is that our costs have gone up and we're, we're going down in the amount of money coming into the school board system right now. So I would, I would suggest to you that you probably as, as soon as you possibly can, put forward a measure in order to increase the millage, to give you the money to be able to do what this group is asking for, but you don't have right now, which most people don't realize. Cause I'm reading the comments on Facebook and, and I'm reading all the comments on social media of these folks and they just don't understand the financial dire of losing one point two million dollars. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bowman. Angie, was it anyone else? Yep, this, come on. We have Ms. Jessica Brough.
Yes, sir.
Glad to have you here this afternoon.
My name is Jessica Brough. I reside at fourteen thirteen Power and Drive, Araby, Louisiana. Both of my kids go to Shellman High School. Ms. Doris, I spoke to you last Thursday privately, on a telephone. Am I correct?
Yes.
Okay. Ms. Doris, Friday evening, after my daughter returns from school, she gets pulled out of her first period classroom after a private meeting on the telephone, asking about the incident, if, about the fight that happened with my daughter. And it's a bystander. On August twenty-third, she does have still hearing loss. The school is overcrowded. No one informed me about what happened to my daughter. If it wasn't for her texting me in second period, second period, yes ma'am, texting me to let me know that she couldn't hear at all. That is a problem. And then when she goes to the principal, because it was a big old fight, nobody took my daughter to the clinic nor to the nurses station. My daughter had, went to the emergency room with hearing loss. Yes, ma'am, hearing loss. I lost two weeks of work because I'm dealing with my daughter till this day. So I talked to you privately, Ms. Doris, Friday, Thursday evening. My daughter gets called in, in, at a classroom Friday morning, first period. Why are we doing what I asked you to my daughter? And you know what I'm talking about? About the certain incident, about conversation. The teacher asked my daughter, pulled her out of the classroom and asked her about the conversation of the student that caused the problem to my daughter. I'd like to know why the my, the teacher did that to my daughter, because this was a me and you, me, you conversation, not for my daughter. And then all of the principals, assistant principals, counselors are talking to my daughter. I don't want no one to talk to my daughter unless I am present at that time because she should not be. She should not be the one talking to anybody about what happened to her and what she's going through, because she is going through a lot as it is and she could barely hear. And I'm so frustrated with this school. And I want to know why this school never called me to inform me that she got hurt. Then in that, after I found out about that incident, there was another fight after that fight. It all happened in first period, this big fight. Can y'all please tell me what is going on at Shellman High School that y'all keep on, no one can ever explain? Everything is hush, hush with this school until our kids come home every day and telling us what's going on. We hear it from the kids. You're exactly right, ma'am. Everybody here. And then, then I'd like to know why, right now, yeah, I knew y'all probably got the paperwork today, why Shellman High was the only high school, only school for student enrollment form? Not, not one elementary or middle school got one, just Shellman High School. Did anybody else from Shellman High School get at this? A student enrollment form? Actually, kids about that because guess what? They are asking for it now at Shellman High School.
Okay, thank you.
Sir?
Time's up right now, ma'am.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you for coming, ma'am. Angie, anyone else? No, that's it? Okay. As this concludes, um, the board will get together with the, the administration with Ms. Toche and we'll go over all these requests from the, the audience and we will take it on advisement. Okay? Thank you. Okay. Go on to, um, item number three. Approval of the minutes, approval to incorporate the report of the General Committee meeting of September thirteenth, twenty twenty-two into the September twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-two at the regular monthly meeting. Motion from Mrs. Smith, second by Mr. Warner.
Second.
Any questions concerning the minutes? Or additions? If not, please cast your vote.
Motion passes eleven zero.
Okay, the next one is personnel items. Ms. Pritchett. Ms. Denise Pritchett.
Good evening. You should find the, um, changes to our personnel since the last time we met. You see that hiring has slowed down.
Did.
We do need, which is good. We do need, um, we filled all our paras, full-time paras. We still are searching for substitutes and a few bus drivers. But I did get a chance though to go today to U N O to meet with a group of juniors who are studying to be teachers and start recruiting a little bit early. So that was pretty exciting to see the teachers.
I noticed that, um, in a, in a voice that we had on our former, one of our custodians passed away, Joan, she was sat here at the central office, Joan Bianchi.
Joan De Plusis.
De Plusis, I'm sorry. De Plusis. Joan was a longtime employee here at the central office. So if we could just have a moment of silence, I'd really appreciate it. Thank you. And our condolences goes out to the family because she was a, she was a wonderful person. She really was. Oh, and Tammy Legend, I think we did.
Tammy Legend.
Exactly. We did her last. Okay. How we doing with bus drivers tonight?
We still need a few. We're always looking for bus drivers.
Okay, custodians? We need some more custodians too?
Yes, yes. Just a few though.
Just a few?
Yeah.
Okay.
Actually, we have many positions available. Not only, you know, we can always use additional bus drivers, custodians, paras, cafeteria technicians, substitutes.
We did just put out an advertisement for a full-time cafeteria tech. So, yes.
Mr. Warner.
What about certified teachers? How we doing with those?
We need four right now at Shellman High, sped, E L A, math, and another sped. We also need a, a counselor, an elementary school counselor. We may have one. Hope and I hear back tonight, so, yeah.
Anyone else?
That's a problem for many school systems across.
Across the nation, yes. It is.
Thank you.
That's it, Mr. Warner? Yes, okay. Mr. Warner?
Hi, Ms. Pritchett.
Hello.
Um, so when you were at U N O today, how are they addressing the teacher shortage they're working? Do they have some programs out there to try to address the?
Yeah, I think they're suffering just as much as everyone else for a lot of elementary, not very meta, you know, middle school, secondary, that's always been an issue. But there are people studying to be elementary teachers. I think most people now have the alternate certification programs and that's where we seem to be pumping out more teachers than the regular tradition. we seem to be pumping out more teachers than the regular, traditional manner. But there's never enough.
So there's less, less people in their pipeline that want to become
Right, right.
Teachers, and especially middle school, high school.
Exactly. And that's been for a few years, but it's becoming crucial everywhere.
Thank you, Ms. Pritchett.
Like we've talked about before, all across the nation, the colleges of education have been reporting fewer and fewer young people or anyone entering into the colleges of education, into their teacher preparation programs. So many of us, including, as we've talked about, have established alternate certification programs to encourage people who have degrees and looking at changing in mid-career careers, you know, after they've maybe tried something else, and then feel they're interested in education, and they have the degree and can pass the national praxis, praxis exam, demonstrating that they know the content area, then entering these alternate certification programs to work on teaching strategies and different things that they need to become proficient as teachers.
Okay. Anyone else? Ms. Daisor.
Ms. Foché, at this time, how many do we have in the alternate, excuse me, the, in our program?
We have 25 this year, primarily.
25?
Mm-hmm. Lots grown. Right now.
Great.
And it varies from year to year, depending upon, you know, what the needs are. It's primarily in middle and high school core areas and in special education courses. Thank you.
Anyone else? Well, this is, no action has to be taken on this, because this is information, okay? Because of Act One. Thank you, Ms. Pritchett. Okay, move on to item number five. Approval of the St. Canor Parish School Board, 2022, 2020, 2023, nutrition and physical activity wellness policies. This was a recommendation by the committee.
Some more.
Motion by Mr. Long.
Second.
Second by Kelly. Ms. Bowman. Okay, any questions? Please cast your vote.
Motion passes 11-0.
Okay, 5.2, approval administration recommendation to award renewal of general liability insurance contract to Louisiana Risk Management Agency at a cost of 235,062. This was a recommendation by the committee. So a motion by Mr. Long.
Second.
Second by Ms. Daisor. Any questions?
I just, I have a question on our, on our general liability. When we have, like, further, further along in a policy, in our policy changes, we're being mandated to let, under the Patriotic Act, the school, Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, Boys and Girls Clubs to use our schools. Do we get a certificate from them?
Yeah, they're usually covered under the umbrella of the Boy Scouts of America or Girl Scouts of America.
Do they have to have, like, additional insured? Do they provide us with that? Like when, like when we do, like, movies that come shoot, do they have to?
Yes.
They have to provide a?
A certificate.
A whole time.
We work.
Whole homes.
Naming us an additional insured on their general liability policy.
Thank you, Ms. Fernandez. All in favor, please cast your vote.
Motion passes 11-0.
5.3, approval authorizing a superintendent, superintendent to sign their required Louisiana uninsured motors. This was a recommendation by the committee. Motion by Ms. Johnson, second by Ms. Bowman. Any questions? There being none, please cast your vote.
Motion passes 11-0.
5.4, approval administration recommendation to award renewal of cyber liability insurance contract to Lloyds of London at a cost of 36,487.80. This was a recommendation by the committee. Have a motion by Mr. Long, second by Ms. White. Any questions? This is what's discussed at the committee meeting. We have the insurance people here tonight. You got any questions for them? Let them have it. So.
With the fraud that's occurring out there on a daily basis, and people getting hacked, and all the security problems that occur in the cyber world, so I'm, we definitely need this.
We need that, yes. I agree 100%. Please cast your vote.
Motion passes 11-0.
5.5, approval administration recommendation to award building and management system upgrade to contract to C Energy Building Solutions LLC at a cost of 387,171 miles and 43 cents. This was a recommendation by the committee. Mr. Long and Mr. Smith, right?
Yes, sir.
Any questions? Please cast your vote.
Motion passes 11-0.
Okay.
Can I just make a statement on that one?
Just go right ahead, Mr. Long.
Thank you. Maybe a year from now, we can get an update on that and see if it's actually paying for itself.
If we get 10% saving on our electric bill, that'll cover the cost of that right there.
Right.
Now, the next group is a group of policy changes that's mandated by the, by the state, and we have to, we have to approve, because it's mandated. So I'm gonna read them off. If you have any questions, we went over it at the committee meeting, and if anybody wants to speak on one, they have to, before we take the vote, we'll let them speak on it.
Voting global?
Global, it's gonna be a global one, yes. Okay. 5.6, adoption of revision of school board policy GBDA. This was a recommendation by the committee.
Excuse me, Mr. England, can you explain, not explain, but at least name what each of these are, in case there are any questions and the public will know. Employment of retired.
Well, it's adoption of revision of the board policy GBDA.
Right. If you would just say what that.
Would you like me to do that?
Would you do that?
Sure.
Ms. Foché's got the, the.
Sure. We went over all of these at the committee meeting in depth, and in your folder, the GBDA policy has to do with the employment of retired personnel. This was passed by the legislature this past session, that with certain restrictions, we can reemploy retired teachers to fill vacancies where we cannot find them with more active members.
Okay. The next is adoption of revision of the school board policy GBN. This was a recommendation by the committee.
All right, this policy, and again, all of these are a direct result of legislation which was passed in the spring session of 2022 by the legislature, dealing with dismissal of employees, with specifically talking in terms of bus driver dismissals and written notice and due process involved with those potential actions.
Okay. Any questions from board members on that? 5.8, adoption of revision of school board policy GBRIB. This was a recommendation by the committee.
This was an update addressing sick leave policies dealing with our employees. Again, a result of legislative action in the spring session.
What about students?
No, we can't take them public.
Each one of these policies of the school board, if the legislature voted to amend state law addressing that, it is required that we go in and change the policies dealing with each of these issues. So these are policy revisions that are necessary as a direct result of legislative action.
Right. Okay. 5.9, adoption of revision of school board policy GBRID.
Okay, this deals with military leave from any employee that would have to take military leave if they belong to any group that would be called up or activated.
5.10, adoption of revision of school board policy IDDFA.
Policy deals with the Special Education Advisory Council that we have established, and it more specifically deals with membership on the Special Education Advisory Council.
5.11, adoption of revision of school board policy IDDFC.
This policy deals with cameras in special education classrooms for students with significant disabilities.
And then they got 5.12, adoption of revision of school board policy JBCE.
This deals with federal and state requirements for implementing school choice.
5.13 is adoption of revision of school board policy JGCE. This is a recommendation by the committee.
This policy deals with providing age and grade appropriate classroom instruction relative to issues with child abuse with children.
5.14, adoption of revision of school board policy LEH. This was a recommendation by the committee.
This policy deals with allowing access to youth school facilities for patriotic organizations which are listed in the federal Title 36 of the U.S. State Code. It includes Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, Boys and Girls Clubs, and all of the entities listed under Title 36 of the United States Code.
Okay, any questions from board members?
Just a comment. Just a comment. All of these updates on policy, as Ms. Foché said, are a direct order from the state to update these.
That's correct.
And might I add that it's mandated, but funding for all these mandates did not come along with these mandates. So the, the local district will have to absorb the money that it will take to implement several of these policies.
You're correct.
Thank you.
100%, Ms. Daisor. Okay, anyone else? Okay, do I have a motion? Mr. Smith, second by Ms. Jackson. Any further questions on this? Now being any other questions, please cast your vote.
Motion passes 11-0.
Okay. Item 6.1, items to be placed on the next committee meeting agenda. You have up to five days to get in contact with the administration. If you want something to be put on the agenda to speak, do so by giving the central officer a phone call. Okay. What it is, is that to be placed on the agenda for the committee meeting, you have up to five days before the committee meeting to put, if you were requesting something to be put on the agenda, you know, to speak.
Okay.
Board members.
And board members, right. We can call, we can call a board member and they can get it on, you know, to the central office. Okay? Okay, the next thing is superintendent's notice. This, this is required, this is, 7.1 is about a school reports on lockdown drills. Ms. Foché.
Okay, each year, according to revised statute 17416.16, that we have to update the emergency and crisis plans that we have, and within the first 30 days of school, have a lockdown drill at each of the different school sites. As we've talked about in many cases, we have, within partnership with the LSU Stevenson Disaster Management Institute, we are the first school system in the state. We did it back in 20, I think it was 2016 or 2017, where we partnered with them to establish emergency plans at each of the school sites with, in conjunction with our first responders, with the Sheriff's Department, the Fire Department, emergency medical services, and all of the players that would be involved in any type of a crisis or emergency at any one of the school sites. So then we spent the last year updating those plans, and with the LSU Stevenson Disaster Management Institute, and we are the first school system in the state, to have those extensive plans, and they're using those as a model for, as we've talked about before, for the, for the rest of the state, for all of the school systems in Louisiana. So in conjunction with those, and if you remember, the Sheriff's Department was here and the Fire Department and all of the players, I guess it was a month or two ago when we finalized and signed off on all of those plans. And during the first 30 days of the school year, we had lockdown drills at every one of the schools. The sheriff's representative was there with us observing those particular drills, and, you know, everything worked extremely well. We rehearsed components of the plan with them. They were on-site with them, and we talked about the different types of things that could be done. And in fact, I think what we're doing now is gonna go maybe one step further over the course of this year and do an actual mock drill at, picking one of the schools that they are involved in and do a mock drill, if something like that would actually happen. As you well know, as part of the plan, the SWAT team for the school system trains in every one of our schools as part of the plan. They have the blueprints. They're able to also, with the IP addresses and such for our computer systems and camera systems, tap into those in case of anything, you know, anything that would happen. So in accordance with 17, revised statute 17416, we have to then present that each year, saying that those drills did occur within the first, you know, 30 days of the school system, and make that report to you that they did occur. Okay.
Any questions for the board members?
Ms. Foché, that's at each school, correct?
Correct.
Elementary, middle, and?
Elementary, middle, and high school, and each principal and school administrator sent in the actual verification that they were done, and there was a sheriff's deputy or representative at each school to observe those.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Any questions for Ms. Foché?
And just along with that, you know, I think it was mentioned earlier, we had ring day over at the high school earlier. It was absolutely, you know, wonderful with, on the field, and I think we had so many just excited seniors to actually get their rings and begin their last year of high school. So it was a great ceremony. Also, I think yesterday, at the, at the high school, the chamber has a, a women's network within the Chamber of Commerce, and what we had started last year was a series of sessions with the, some of the juniors and the seniors, the girls, networking with the women's division of the chamber. Ms. Jackson was there, and Ms. Lemoine was there to, to observe it and actually to participate in it, so it was a wonderful event. This is the second one that we've done, and we'll do another one in the spring, giving many of our female students the opportunity to network with chamber members within the parish and sometimes in the larger metro region. So it was a really wonderful experience.
That's a, that's a good program for the.
It's a wonderful program. So we work very closely with the chamber in many of those programs.
Right. Anyone else? The next thing on, thing that says join. Motion by Mr. Campbell, second by Mr. Egan. All in favor?
Aye.
This means join. And thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for coming here tonight.